Okay, morning everybody. It is nine o'clock on December 10th, 2018. Today we have Kevin Decker from Hope Street Church. He will be in the presentation. So please stand with us.
Please pray. Lord, thank you so much for this day that you've given us and help us to rejoice and be glad in it. Lord, I pray through your spirit to fill this room and guide every heart. To do your will, Lord, help us to set aside our own personal agendas and our own personal goal and submit to you so that your kingdom will come on earth as it is now. And we thank you during this Advent of Christmas season for the greatest gift ever given to us, through your Son. Lord, we thank you, God, for your servants here in this room. You placed them in a position of authority and thank you for their lives and their willingness to serve you here in this county. And Lord, I always pray for our law enforcement officers and first responders that you will protect them, Lord, and guide them and give them safety, Lord, as they stand in the gap to protect our area, our lives. Thank you, dear Lord, for all that you do for us and help us to always acknowledge you in the small things and the big things as well. In all this, in the name of your son Jesus, for this sake. Amen.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
All right, first thing on the agenda is recognition of minutes on November 26th, 2018. First, just court meeting on November 28th, 2018, special commissioner. May I also recognize vouchers to consider an act upon the approval of the county members' office for the period of November between 1st, 2018 and December 5th, 2018. Check numbers. 1-833-82. 83613. Our address was 116521171. In addition to this, for the payroll register for the election, for a grand total of $1,170,607.
Will you turn the vouchers that you presented?
Second, for a quick discussion, I have one question, Judge. Page four of 23. Check number 1-83435. It is the accident auto body. Vehicle damage, broken bridge from a mower, 949. I guess I'm not aware of that. So I'm just asking what that was.
That happened back in the summer.
In summer?
Yeah, Rowan Bridge actually had a backed into a vehicle.
Okay.
And the gentleman was from Ohio State. It was a mower vehicle. So he was from Phoenix and he was having a hard time getting estimates in Phoenix for it to get done. And I offered to have it done here when he came back the next time.
Okay.
So that's what happened. He brought it back here and we had fixed it accident rather than getting it fixed.
So a mower did that to this?
No, it was a truck backed into an accident. I think it ran a two-ton murder.
Oh.
But it happened earlier in the summer.
Okay, okay, okay. Thank you.
Have a motion, second on favor, Commissioner, right here. Number three, insurance report, you recognize the insurance fund report. Carrie, is there anything unusual or you want to talk about? Yes, there is.
Not on this particular report. This report is pretty standard. It's a short report because of the timing involved in some of the claims. I want your brand need to connect.
Okay, okay. So that's so recognized. Number four, transfer of funds to consider an act upon the request to transfer $250,000 from general contingency account to the insurance fund account.
Yes, we are experiencing high claims. We had on the last insurance report, last commissioner's court, we had a single claim that brought to your attention that was for $243,416.84 for a single claim. And we've just been experiencing high claims. On the September 18 report, of the top seven insurance high utilizers that we have on that September report, of the top seven, five of them are cancers. So we're having a lot of high claims. We've also had four NICU claims on that same high utilization report. And that's what the 243 is, is a NICU claim. We've got, I know this report that you're looking at today shows balance of $851,000, but there is $751,775.47 in claims between claims that just haven't hit the report yet and those that are on the voucher underscore for this.
And so Carrie, why would the suggestion be to take from contingency? Because I think there's only half a million in that line item. So so early in the year, I guess I was imagining that insurance fund balance or, and I'm just, I'm thinking out loud, out loud with you guys that.
This is our insurance fund balance.
The contingency?
No, that 851, that there are $751,000 in claims pending, waiting to go through.
One more line item. Is there not another line item in there?
No, the insurance fund at Rowan Bridge had a balance of $15,000. Which is something that that fund can obviously, and contingency is really the place and the general part. So if we can take it. There's just nothing, make nothing, because I can do that.
We're working on a wellness initiative and we will be bringing that to the court. We had initially discussed that next commissioner's court, but there's a conflict of schedule. So it's going to be the first court in January when we bring a wellness initiative to commissioner's court.
Well, sometimes initiative wellness doesn't help you that cancer.
No, well, it won't set these immediate claims on.
So Carrie, I guess I'm just thinking for budget next year. If our only contingency in these scenarios is the contingency account, that may be something we need to think about for the next budget year to add some type of safety net for this if this happens, right? Because that makes that line item very vulnerable with only a half a million in it. That's the noun and the noun.
But keep in mind, you did raise the county's contribution to the insurance fund, $29,000 per person come up. So over the year, we're hopeful that it will grow. It's right now, we just have no cash flow.
Okay, okay. I make a motion that we approve transfer of $250,000 from general contingency account to the insurance fund account.
Have a motion in the second.
Thanks, Karen.
Number four, number five. Number one, four. Your only client. No, I'm sorry. Fire station number one, Bushland to consider an act upon forming a committee to start the process of going on the fire station in Bushland. Good morning. Good morning. I talked to Richard last week.
He's doing fine. He got caught with the weather. He had to go to Mexico this weekend. Somehow, there's no problem.
Oh, somehow, he had to go to Mexico.
He actually did have to.
Oh, he had to.
He didn't want to go, of course.
Well, he and I had a discussion about this and the committee that he and I came up with is obviously you, me, Kathy Fowler, Carrie Hood, Alfonso Farm, Nicholas Wade, Brandon Perry, and Chris Lee. Does that satisfy your opinion? Does that satisfy the court?
Just a couple of questions as it relates to the forming of the committee. So what I remember about this fire station is the land was given by the family that came and planted all the lands, right? So it's your family, right? So the land was given to the county, deeded for purposes of a fire station. And then as it relates to capital planning for this, something that I think always gets us is, you know, we start the committee and we don't really have a dollar amount. So what I'm wrestling with, Judge, is, you know, just the last court, we issued the agreement to look at the district courts building with HOK. And then this project, do we have any type of framework of what, how much this project would cost as you form the committee?
That is, no. That'll be one of the first things that I would like for the community to allow us to do.
Okay.
Is to get a, is to get an architect involved and get an OPC. So that this time, we're coming about it where we're not going, well, we think it's going to cost this. Let's find out what it's going to cost and we can start looking at that.
And just for the record, I was guaranteed there would be no elevator.
Unless somebody changes my mind a lot, my mind could be real hard to change.
There'd be no elevator, we said.
And we'll, we'll be at home with those to check them out.
And the money is probably from.
Yes.
For the letter, sorry?
From the county.
County.
Oh, the county is just in districts.
That's where we're at. We're looking at it and we're carrying on projecting that money the way she thought was right. So we have projections of where it's going to be. And this is, you know, architectural drawings and all our process.
And is there any type of general timeline of when you're looking to turn the dirt, if you will? Is this a?
Not yet.
Okay, I didn't know if anything was that. Judge, would you repeat the names of that?
Well, I'll let you say it. Thank you. Richard Lake, Pat Fitzpatrick, me, Kathy Fowler, Carrie Hood, Alfonso Farm, Nicholas Wade, Brandon Perry, Kenny Chris. I have it typed out for you, Judge. I'm giving to you after. No, we got it. I just couldn't, I'm just kidding. Okay? So we need a, we need a motion, there's a.
Would we approve the committee has stated by the judge, if you start the process of building a new fire station, which this should be fire station number one.
And a motion, we have second. A motion, second on favor, Judge.
On a personal note, the people out there by station number three, we would thank you for the lights being turned back on.
Ah, good message. They got them up this weekend?
Yeah, they were, I got two calls.
Good. I bet they like them. I like, I think it's nice when the stations are already up and powerful.
Very happy.
So thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank y'all.
Okay, number six, registered salaries by position considered for approval to transfer of five positions. Mr. Sims.
I'm here to ask for permission from the board to take funds from my salary basket that is already there and to be able to disperse that among other people in the office. I'm asking for, I have a staff of 41, that's 2,000 lawyers, county manager, nine, or excuse me, seven investigators, nine support staff, and four prime fifty coordinators, and one male health person. I'm asking for the money to be arranged between 23, excuse me, 35 different people. Forty-three of them have been in the office for, and are new hires. Six of them new hires, two of which are ADA's that pass the laws to them and should be given paid as a lawyer now instead of a non-lawyer. So those would be added to make it 33, make it 35. There are four that won't be paid, especially the ones that have been recently hired, such as our criminal persons, of receptionists, and there were two lawyers that were responsible. The two lawyers that speak of this, it's a potential four, they are still ADA's or, yes, the union of lawyers in office or they have one of them ADA.
What does an ADA mean, assistant district?
Assistant district.
Thank you.
But the, I, I, I'm not, I heard you correctly, they're not getting picked, they were not, and I can play this trade right now. Stop and scale. Scott want folks to be put into the position, like into hiring on lawyers into offices to get started, to get folks. And what it is, we're trying to give them and keep them. And on keeping it, we're not doing good job at all. I'll get to that later. The number of departures from, is that, everybody have any questions over this?
Well, we don't have that document, but I'm taking notes. We don't, we don't have that document unless it's.
Same as you, same as.
So session for the last one. Okay, can I ask a really quick question? I just like to understand this. Go down on that list and look at the receptionist. Okay. You're, it looks like you're deducting her salary by $2700. Is that correct?
To receptionist?
Yeah, the receptionist. Her budgeted salary is 37, you're taking 2700 away to make it 34.5. Is that correct?
Something higher or something?
It's right here on this receptionist.
Okay, I'm not looking at that.
Oh, yeah, okay.
No, you're still on one.
Oh, okay. Is anybody else, is anybody else understanding what I'm asking?
I understand what you're asking, I'd like to give an answer to that.
So what is it?
Okay, it's a lineup of her receptionist, okay? Her budgeted salary is 37,281. You're changing it, you take away 2781, 2781 dollars, and her budgeted salary now be 34.5 instead of 37. So does she know that you're taking money out of her salary?
She's not getting paid that much. She's not getting paid the total line item.
Okay, so she's getting paid the 34.
She was, she was hired. When she was hired, when she was hired, she got hired at a lesser amount.
Than 34?
So she's making 34. All these numbers over here, what they were making. So she cannot, she cannot lie to that level of 37,281. She can, but what I'm doing is where there are vacancies that happen and there was a vacancy in the reception spot. And I hired someone at less than what that position was at. Where I get the money to do that is from like kind of things like that. I'm hiring people, say Chuck Slaughter with $295,000. I hired somebody for 70. I had $25,000 to try to adjust through the office. Does that make sense? So that's what I'm trying to do. Never, ever has the department had extra money in every line item in this budget for the salaries.
Chris, this is, right now, I'm sorry. Are you, is some, has someone quit or left or retired and that's what you're dealing with the money that you're giving your mom?
Right.
Okay.
And so here, if someone has quit, if that last time I talked, we had one. And there are two more that are going to be vacant come January 1st. All three of them are lawyers. All of them have left for more money, less work. Because I'm asking, I can tell you every word of lawyers. So that's going to put my total of losing lawyers in the last two, two budget cycles and up to, I guess, quarter. You have to be simple. I would've lost 15 lawyers. I would've lost four investigator.
See, that, that makes me say, these lawyers that you hire, they knew the salary when they came in. Was there expectations that they would be getting a huge raise in six months or whatever and they didn't get it, so they left? I mean, I'm just asking.
Okay. What we're paying, this substandard, what Scott and I had the funds to do, this substandard to Randall County. Randall County lawyer, ADA's get paid 30, on average, $33,000 more per person. $33,000. On the investigators, it's $20,000.
Where can we find that information?
Randall County hired four lawyers from it.
They had, say, they're going to Randall, is that what you're going with?
They're going to Randall. I'll give you an example. Coltrid Good, when I stalked him in law school, he, he went to the TCA director, our associated, state association director. And he wanted to intern somewhere when he was in college. And Rob Kepel told him, you need to go down to Old Texas because he knows I've got a good internship program. And he came there and we, I stalked him after that. Next two school years, I stalked him.
Nice kids, a lot.
And, and he came and then he, he told me that he wanted to do some stuff with International Justice Ministry. So about a year and a half into his employment, which would be actually some in the baby school and gotten trained up and all that kind of stuff. He left and went to International Justice Ministry to, to Africa. He did that for about two years, the money ran out, he came back. He wound up in Judge Williams Court, who rests two trial weeks a month. And he had one other prosecutor assigned to that. He left for one, significantly, and went to Austin. And now he's constantly being responsible for these two prosecutors being responsible for two trial weeks a month. He went to being responsible for every double month trial weeks.
I have two questions, if I may. First question is, the requested salaries that you're looking at moving around broadly 2700, if I remember correctly, down at the bottom of that document, Judge. So do you think, like, these amounts are fairly insignificant when you're talking about a big income disparity like that? Do you think that these amounts are enough that will keep the 14 that turned? Is, is that your expectation that these salaries will help keep your staffs?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I need every dollar I can get in my salary account.
And then based on this whole analysis, my second question is, this whole analysis of your department of moving around all of these dollars for the most part, is this, after this, are you done? Like, we would not expect to see this, right? You would consider yourself stable in your salaries for your department?
Yes, until the expense cycle, the answer is yes.
No, and I'm, I'm speaking beyond the budget cycle.
What?
I'm speaking beyond one year.
No.
No, so we need to expect this again, in all fairness.
In all fairness?
Sure.
We need to expect that I'll be asking for some more money specifically toward the lawyers at the next budget cycle.
Or there are salary increases on those line items?
Yes, just for the lawyers.
But what about this whole breakdown of all of your departments? Would we see this again, potentially? Or are you stable after this requested change?
Every time I lose people, I want to, if someone can come in and ask for an adjustment with that money. Otherwise, it's just sitting there. I give them more than, oh, it's enough to carry it back. The lesson, but tacos you live in, I forgot what it was.
Around 5% of the way.
Take it to 50,000. Is that what, is well over 50,000 I know.
That you give back?
It winds up coming back in the place of.
Budget higher on salaries, which I, you know, maybe we don't need to be doing that. Maybe we need to be budgeting closer to what people's salary is and then we're not in this position.
That's not the salary line item. That's my whole budget.
Kind of boils down, you have a budget.
But part of that, part of that is money where lawyers have left, where lawyers have left. This is where most of that money comes from.
What I was going to say, you basically have a budget with so much money in it and you're not going to change that. The money's not going to go up. It's just going to be dispersed to different.
For right now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that probably happened in the future. Probably happened in the future. They're going to do the same thing, but it's going to be within your budget.
I've done this.
But what I'm saying is that.
Many times.
I'm not, I don't want to be one to micromanage somebody's budget. So, you know, that's, that's basically what it all boils down to. He's going to use the money that's in his budget and disperse it the way he thinks is.
I want to talk to y'all a minute about the experience that we're in our office. And this is including me. We have eight people that have legal experience over 10 years. One is me. One is my first assistant. One is Mark Basket. One is Jack Owens. All of us are, Jack's the head of the appellate division. Mark is an unbelievable black collar crime guy. Absolutely unbelievable. And fortunately, Jason, I've got administrative. And we had a, we had a situation in the office last night. Where one of our attorneys says it's not going to be around for a couple of weeks. He was supposed to try a case starting today that would take two weeks. He helped do that. He's going to help Jason Harrington because Jason was helping me. Two Jasons in the office. And I called Jason one, Harrington's the first assistant, and then Jason two is the assistant PA. And unfortunately, he had a death in his family. And it's going to take two weeks to try that case and to deal with three different outlets. And probably will wind up taking more than that. But the, so what I'm telling you, there's 12 lawyers in office, propositions in office. Now, six of them have less than one year experience. Three of those have less than two months experience. I've got three that have up to four years experience. And I have three at accident, two in the year. Of course, we're rearranging January 1st, 2019. Judge Ward's cases, criminal cases are going to be handled by Judge Shep. So Judge Shep will be doing two trial weeks a month. Judge Estes will be doing, switching and doing two trial weeks a month. Judge Serman will be doing two trial weeks a month. And Judge Woodburn will be doing two trial weeks a month. Judge Woodburn was the only one that's been doing two trial weeks a month. So I need two lawyers in all those courts. Right now, right now, at the end of the year, I can tell you I can't stack that. And I have experienced enough lawyers to stack that sufficiently.
And the primary reason of the, the charges because of financial.
It was.
The primary, the, the body is, is not getting paid.
Well, and here's the deal, Randall, Randall County's making that much more and for one felony case they have, we have to enact. It's not just the money, it's the workload too. And so I'm, I'm not saying Randall, we ought to get paid more than Randall County, but we sure ought to be up there close to it. And quite frankly, if Scott and I're going to be able to keep any people, that's going to be the act to have.
And workload is not going to decrease.
Right.
That workload is not going to decrease.
Our, I'll say, I'll start back, three budget cycles now. We did 2,600 cases. Two years ago, we did 29. Last year, we did 3,400. And if the city police department hadn't been, IT stuff hadn't been down for six weeks, it'd be 37. I have no reason not to expect that we'll see that or more with this next time. What's causing it, I do not know. They say the crime rate is going down. I can tell you in my office, we are not seeing that. We are absolutely not seeing that. And I can speculate on some reasons why that's happening, but it's not all, I can't speculate as to why all of it's happening. And I can speculate on some reasons why that's happening, but it's not all, I can't speculate as to why all of it's happening.
I guess I'm just, I'm wrestling with Randall because I think about things that have happened in your department over the years, about like the big technology purchase that happened, about additional positions with various grants that you guys have gone after, about new positions. And so, it's a little unnerving to me when we say, here's the requested salary, and just know, I'm coming every time, if you will, right? And, and that's fair, that, you know, that's your comment. I just, I think about all of the other departments in the county. I think about the sheriff's office and those working the jail on, on the other side, like the conditions. And I can't imagine any one department not standing up here to say the same thing. So that's, that's what I'm wrestling with, because we feel that countywide.
Is anybody in any department that lost half your staff in three years? Last three years? Anybody? I have. And Judge, Amanda, Commissioner, and the Department of IT, if we hadn't done that.
Right.
And if we hadn't hired Haley, to help us out. I can't. We would've been paying the ordinance if we hadn't hired Haley. Because Jason's the only guy out there. He's the first assistant. He's got a lot of other stuff to do. IT department over here, it's got a lot of stuff to do. And if you hadn't hired Haley, we would've never got Tech Share put in.
Yeah, and, and I feel like as a court, there's been a general consensus to getting what your department needs, and I, I feel like that.
Right.
For the most part.
And what I'll tell you is, I ran into Ali Krantz at the elective course in San Antonio. At my elective course, the annual, two years ago in San Antonio. She worked with us for two years. Her husband got a job, and she got a job, but she got a job in New Brunswick. Her husband got a job down there, and gone. They don't have any electronic deal. So she's working domestic violence stuff, just like she was when she was up here doing the anti-stuff. And she came running off the escalator, walked toward me, and reached up and hugged me, and she said, and shook me like this and said, I never thought I would say this, but thank God for Tech Share. And I said, y'all don't have anything like Tech Share? And she goes, no. And it's still taken us like two hours to do our cases. Just the simple case.
So, Judge?
Tech Share has helped us. I can tell you, that has got me. But when there's that big of a war case load coming, they, they got forty-five detectives just in the detective department, and I've got six people screaming at you.
Move, we approve the transfer of funds between positions for the district attorney's office. Second.
I have a motion and second on favor, Judge.
Thank you very much.
Okay, stay where you are.
Okay. You wanna go with the text?
No, just go ahead and do it while you're, while you're sitting there. I'm reminding Tech Share to consider next on the master ILA for stockholder, just because of Tech Share as well as twenty-nineteen Tech Share Prosecutor Resource Sharing in Denver.
Okay. What has happened is, in October, I brought y'all the, the ILA, the master ILA, they've been approved. Contents of that. Now it's time for the ILA to, with the contract with the local, uh, junior. LTC. And so, that's what, that's for. And then the other is for the, uh, participation in Tech Share, uh, which is tying us to Tech Share and then what the funding will look like. And so, for example, this next cycle, and I think I probably got three pages off the, the pages on, on the stuff that I sent. Uh, but for stakeholder payment, I think by December thirty-first is thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and ninety-one dollars. That's the smallest of the bid ones, is fifty-one thousand. Then everybody else is six years to hand. So, and then it also goes through the process of, where our allocations and our costs and stuff are. Potter County, so what's happening here is a population-based distribution. Uh, Potter County's, the Potter County balance is two hundred seventy-six thousand, one hundred ninety dollars and forty-nine cents. That's out of the total of thirty-two thousand shot of, made, uh, ten million dollars. The total, the total amount is thirty-two thousand dollars shot of ten million dollars. So we're the, we have the least amount in. Goodland has three thousand, it's for four hundred and thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollars. Then we're in Cameron County, who's joined in at two sixty. Then we've got Dallas, it's got three million, basically three million, and Tarrant County's got basically five million in. Uh, there's, and reason for why we did all this was so that they could sell Tech Share out of state. And I can tell you that they have latched up into a tremendous department. And Chicago was contracted to buy Tech Share prosecutor. And what, what typically happens in Chicago happens to the four or five counties around it. They typically do what Chicago does. Does that make sense? So, this is all, so, in, um, so the participation deals on how the money will be, is the deal on rights and how the money will be effective in your bus, create population losses.
I make a motion that we approve the master ILA agreement for stakeholder participation in Tech Share, as well as the twenty-nineteen prosecutor resource sharing in Denver, as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and second on favor, Judge. Thank you, Randall. Do you want to slide?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I can't attest, but I can get somebody else to. Thank you.
Okay. Number seven, twenty-nineteen government day, to consider next on the date.
So this will be quick, just a save the date. So this will be our fifth, let me say fifth, or sixth, maybe sixth, maybe sixth. Yes, our sixth year, and so thank you to the committee, because after the first of the year, we'll start to meet up again. But the date is April eighth, twenty nineteen. It's hard to believe. Uh, but I just wanted to get that out there, just in terms of save the date. And then, the month of April will be a very busy month for your court. Commissioner Church is leading our initiative also during the, uh, our second week of court, if you will, the last week of April. We are the host city for, uh, the conference, the West Texas County Judge and Commissioners Conference. So they will be here at the Embassy Suites and Civic Center and that kind of thing. So, it's one of the reasons why I wanted to give the save the date out early. And I know that that format will look a little different now that the sheriff's office has moved, the administrative side has moved. So we'll start working on that agenda. But I just wanted to get that date out there to everybody, because it really does kind of affect us all in little form or fashion. So thank you to the committee. Hopefully, everybody's still willing to keep going. It's a fun day.
Okay, thank you. Uh, number eight, County Court Law Number One, to consider for approval of making the salaries and fringe benefits budgeted, budgeted at thirty-six hundred dollars for the GDC or the Allen expenditures over the twenty-five percent lame duck limit for extra help to provide funds for county court card through twelve thirty-one. Vacation payout of a terminated employee created shortage of funds.
What does this mean?
Also lame duck. I don't know. I mean, I know like that, this one has been shot, but this one is different.
Just to answer that last question, there's a provision in the local government code that says that any expenditure over a threshold amount made by a candidate or made by an office holder who either did not get re-elected or didn't run again, has to come to Commissioners' Court for approval.
What does that amount, Scott?
People always use the twenty-five percent threshold.
Twenty-five percent of what, of their total budget?
Right.
Okay. So you're saying that they've spent over twenty-five percent of that and they're on their way out, that has to come to Commissioners' Court?
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so his person that retired or turned, like, whatever the term, she left, she took all vacation, her vacation. Okay.
And he has brought in someone to work full-time, but as of December third, there were only fifty-six hours left out of his twenty-five percent of the funds. And that is including the, uh, position that was vacated, anything that was left there. So he would like to keep someone in the office until December thirty-first. But he will exceed the twenty-five percent he does that, so either we ask for more money from him, the BND's department, or letting him go.
This is Judge Roberts' court. Is it still an active court?
I, I just, he, he is signing, I mean, they are like, we're still sending stuff up to the office and. Janitoring along with the queues and some dismissals and what all from, from the dockets. But.
So does everyone in the position?
I mean, is there staff up there? No?
Yeah. Yeah, I, that I don't know. I've not heard anything about him having any.
No, not since, um, it was a week in October, but other than that, I don't think he's experienced.
Do you know if he's planning on being here for?